Thank you for this beautiful, thank you for all the wonderful blessings that we enjoy. Thank you for our city and our staff, my fellow council members. I pray for those who are ill, please heal them. As we discuss the items on the agenda tonight, please give us a spirit of cooperation and wisdom to make the best decision. I ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, if you'll, oh, meeting's called to order, and if you'll rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to number three, open forum. Open forum's an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not listed on the agenda. And in order to address City Council, you must complete a form prior to the meeting. Do we have anyone to speak this morning? Okay, thank you. All right, and so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve a kind of consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Just having a second, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Okay, that will take us to number six, the regular agenda. Receive and discuss initial assessment regarding whether redistricting is required for the City Council, member districts considering the new 2020 census data, and if so, discuss and consider a resolution adopting criteria for use in the 2021 redistricting process, and a resolution adopting guidelines for public participation in the redistricting process. City Manager Kennesaw.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mario Kennesaw, City Manager. Tonight, or today, is the kickoff of the redistricting process. This is a process that goes every 10 years at the conclusion of the decennial census. So last time you all did, went through this process was back, more likely, back in 2011. Normally, the census data is provided to the respective entities usually in the spring, in the March-April timeframe. However, this year, the data was not submitted to the local entities until at least September. As a result, cities, counties, and school districts, those that have single-member districts, are going through the redistricting process as we speak. Here, most recently, the counties, including Nacogdoches County, completed their redistricting process. And again, because of the timing of when the data was released, everyone's behind. And so we're at a process now that we are working to get this process started for, for the city. The school districts in the same timeframe as we are, in fact, they started their process, I believe, last Thursday. And so we're literally just about a few days, give or take, behind, and in some cases, maybe even ahead of the school district. And so that's not certainly anyone's fault, it's just when the data was released, and so we really couldn't get started until that information was released. Both, well, all three, the school district, the city, and the county have, have engaged with the firm of Bickerstaff, Heath, Delgado, and Acosta. It's an attorney's firm, and they are helping all three entities with, with the redistricting process. As I'd mentioned, the county has just recently completed theirs, and we're starting ours. And one of the reasons why we felt this time all three entities working together, while we have different agreements, separate agreements, we thought it was important to work collectively as an entity here for Nacogdoches County. And while the school district and the city are separate entities, we're actually working together on trying to come up with the appropriate dates for some of the public meetings and hearings that we're gonna have, not hearings, but public meetings that we're gonna have, based on the map. So instead of having four meetings, we're like, we're looking to have two, so split between the city and, and the school district. And so trying to work together to make it not as onerous on the public, especially since we're on a shortened timeframe. We have to get this process completed by, I believe it was January 19th, a lot of it because of the filing period for, for the, for the city and school district elections that are coming up. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Arnold, Philip Arnold, he is with, with the firm Bickerstaff, Heath, Delgado, and Acosta. He will go through the initial assessment, lay out a timeline of when some of the next series of meetings we'll have with council, and timeline that we'll be having conversations with the community. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Arnold, unless you all have any questions before we get started. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Arnold. And he's online, so, so he's gonna be navigating the presentation, and he's, he's working remotely.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. As the City Manager said, I'm with Bickerstaff, Heath, Delgado, and Acosta, and we performed an initial assessment to determine whether or not the city of Nacogdoches needs to redistrict. And this presentation has two parts. The first part will discuss the, it's a short summary of the relevant law regarding redistricting. And the second part, we'll go into detail about the city of Nacogdoches and what the data from the 2020 census shows us. And let me get to our first slide here. The first slide is, this is really just the, the plan of what the project will take us through. So this is each step as we go through the process. We're at the first step, which is the initial assessment. We will discuss adopting the criteria and guidelines that you all have before you in resolutions to consider passing tonight. Then we will work with the city to develop illustrative plans, have any public comment periods or hearings. I believe we have two scheduled jointly with the IST. We will analyze those comments and then make any changes to plans as we work towards adopting a final plan. And then finally, implementing the final plan, which is adopting the new redistricting maps. This is our timeline, so we're tonight at the initial assessment. We have two drawing workshops set up, one in November and one in December. The public presentations are scheduled for January 5th and 6th, and then final adoption is currently scheduled for January 18th. The next slide is talking about the applicable redistricting principles. There's two, two main principles, and then some qualifications to those. So the first one is one person, one vote, which is the Fourteenth Amendment requirement that the districts be in roughly equal population. We'll get into detail about how we determine what is equal population between the districts in a second. The second consideration is complying with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which means we do not discriminate against any ethnic or racial minorities. And then Shaw versus Reno, which is a U.S. Supreme Court case that limits the use of race. And we'll go into a little bit of detail about how we balance the Section 2 Voting Rights Act requirement and the Shaw versus Reno limitation. And then finally, you may be aware that Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act was ruled unconstitutional, or rather, how it's implemented, it was ruled unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court. So retrogression is not a legal standard we have to comply with, but it is one of the criteria we will consider, because it is, we could, we think it is the best practice to consider it as we work through the process. Retrogression being that we, meaning that we do not draw districts that essentially discriminate or retrogress, draw districts that if you have a majority-minority district, you try to keep it a majority-minority district as, as much as possible. So the one-person-one-vote principle comes from the U.S. Constitution, and for single-member districts, that they must have approximately equal population. The rule of thumb is a 10% total deviation, and that is a deviation between the biggest and smallest district are no greater than 10% different. The 10% comes from case law from the Supreme Court, which essentially says that if you're within that 10% differential, 10% or less, then you are assumed to be in roughly equal proportion to each other. So in order to determine that, we determine the most populous and least populous districts, and the ideal size district. And we take the most populous and least populous. And this next slide will show us an example. So this would be a city with four districts totaling 40,000 people. The ideal district size would be 40,000 divided by four, which is 10,000 people in each district. In this example, we have a total population of District A, which would be the largest district of 11,000 people. District D being the smallest district of 8,000 people. You take the difference between those. So, for example, District A has 10% larger than the ideal size, and District D is 20% smaller than the ideal size. We add the 10 and 20% together, even though the 20% is a negative number, you add them together, and that equals a 30% deviation. So the biggest district and the smallest district are 30% different in size from each other. So we want that to be a 10% differential. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act says that we should not discriminate on the basis of race or language or minority status, and to avoid packing and cracking. Cracking or fracturing is dividing minority voters into multiple districts in order to fragment their vote. So that may be an example where, if drawn together, a minority group could theoretically contain enough voters to elect a candidate of their choosing, but they are fracked and cracked into multiple districts in order to dilute their ability to do that. Packing is the opposite of that, where you may have a minority group who could theoretically make up the majority of two districts, but you pack them all into one district in order to prevent them from electing two elected members of their choosing. So Shaw versus Reno is really the, the opposite kind of standard of, or the ceiling, maybe, of, of Section 2. And that's a U.S. Supreme Court case that says race may not be the predominant factor to traditional districting principles, which we'll get to in a second, what those traditional districting principles are. So it's okay to be aware of race and to consider it to satisfy Section 5, which doesn't apply to us at the moment, but we're looking at it in particularly Section 2. But you should use race no more than necessary, and they use the phrase narrowly tailor the maps to take race into consideration. And particularly bizarrely shaped districts, which are not unconstitutional per se, but there may be some evidence that race was a factor when you drew the districts. So here we have an example of what we would consider a bizarrely shaped district. This was Harris County in a plan the legislature drew for congressional districts. The top was before, what the legislature drew, and the bottom was after the Bush versus Vera case was resolved, and how it was drawn by the courts. So you can see kind of the bizarre shape of the red area in the original map. And also note how, in the bottom map, the district is not only more evenly shaped, but it's also more compact. So compactness is something we'll look at. It's difficult to measure mathematically, there are some tools that we can use to do it, but it's difficult to measure mathematically because cities are not perfect circles. So just using math is difficult to do, but you can look and see that obviously the, the bottom map is much more compact than the top. Here we have our criteria, and this is one of the resolutions that'll be before you tonight to pass. And these are the criteria we'll consider as we go through the redistricting process. The first one is to use identifiable boundaries as the district lines. So these could be rivers, lakes, parks, roads, things like that, that the general public can look at and say that this road divides this district from this district. The other is to maintain communities of interest in neighborhoods together. The idea of this is to essentially allow people of a particular community or neighborhood to more adequately elect somebody who represents their groups. Using whole voting precincts if possible, and voting precincts are essentially the, the blocks that the county creates in order to, they are composed of one representative of the U.S. House, the State House, the State Senate, and the State Board of Education. And so those, we like to keep together if at all possible, and it's not always possible to do, but we like to keep them together. One, because county elections administrators like to have whole voting precincts, larger voting precincts if possible. But also because if you get into splitting voting precincts on a granular level, it can be some evidence that you're using race inappropriately to redistrict. The next criteria is to base plans on the existing districts, so that's not to start from whole cloth, but to take what we have and make the changes we need to in order to put the population in balance. The next criteria is to adopt districts of roughly equal size that we've covered before with a 10% differential. Then drawing districts that are compact and contiguous, and we saw that with the Bush versus Vera map about what compactness looks like. Contiguous just means that the districts touch each other. And we'll see with the city of Nacogdoches here in a couple of slides, your, your districts do, but what you can't do is have a district broken up by another district, so they have to physically touch each other in some way. You also look to keep incumbents in their existing districts, because as the Supreme Court has said, people have elected the elected representatives of their choosing, and they're entitled to keep those elected representatives. And then, of course, we narrowly tailor the plan to comply with the Voting Rights Act as we discussed with the Shaw versus Reno standpoint. So here we have the benchmark, what we call the benchmark standard for the city of Nacogdoches. So this is what the wards currently look like in the city. We've numbered them for sake of the charts, it's a little easier, but I understand you all call them the southwest, and southeast, and northeast, and northwest wards. So this is what we have right now. This, and I apologize, it's a little blurry, is part of the initial assessment packet we sent you. So this will show you the people who live in each district. And you can see on the bottom, the total population of the city is 32,131 people. That divided by four is how we get our ideal size of 8,033 people. And then you can see the overall deviation at the bottom in blue is 13.11%, which is the difference between, as we said, the biggest and smallest district. In this case, the largest district by population is District 2, or I'm sorry, District 1, and the smallest district is District 2. And then as you continue across the lines there, you can see the breakdown of Hispanic population of each district, non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic black, non-Hispanic Asian, and other. And then we have other charts to break this down into greater detail, but this is generally the populations that we need to consider for the city. Here we have the same chart, and this is showing voting age population of each district. So you can see the number of people over the age of 18. It does not consider who is a citizen, because there was not a citizenship question, but this is people who live in each district over the age of 18. We can use a voting age population to comply with the Voting Rights Act if we need to. One person, one vote under the Fourteenth Amendment requires the total population to be used to put the districts in balance, but to determine if we're discriminating against any minority groups, we can also look to the voting age population. So this next map is what we call a thematic map, and we have two. The first one here is the Hispanic thematic map. This map shows the relative concentration of Hispanics within the city. And as you can see on the legend on the bottom right, the darker shade of red indicates more concentration of Hispanics within a certain, these blocks are, I believe they are census blocks. So with any census block, which is the basic building block the census uses, we can see the relative portion of Hispanics in that block. Now I'll caution that it does not tell you how many people live in the block. So as we go, for example, on the bottom side, if you can see right here, there's not a lot of people who live in this area. I looked at it earlier, and I believe there's, I think about 10 people who live there. So showing that over 60% of the population is Hispanic tells us something, but it doesn't tell us where the population of the city is. And for that, we'll need to look, as part of the drawing process, we can get into where the actual numbers of people are. These maps can be useful just to tell you kind of generally where any minority groups live within the city. The next map is the African-American thematic map, and again, this shows the same thing. The darker shade of green shows more concentration of African-Americans, but again, it doesn't show a total population number, so it can be a little deceiving, but it generally gives you an idea of where African-Americans live within the city. And again, this slide just tells us again our total process of what we're going through here. We're at the initial assessment and adopting the criteria and guidelines. And this is finally, again, our timeline to do that, to adopt the guidelines tonight, if we want to. We should adopt the guidelines before the first drawing workshop on November 16th at, at the latest, so that they're in place before we start drawing any maps. And that's all I have for you, council members. Do you all have any questions for me?
I'd like to open it first to a public comment. Anyone in the audience care to participate, to, to comment? Okay. Council, any comments? Mr. Anderson?
I don't particularly at this point, anyway.
Ms. Fisher?
Sure. Hi, thank you for that presentation. In looking at the drawing of the maps, I mean, I guess it's not as strangely drawn as the maps from the Bush v. Vera case, but it doesn't quite look like a logical drawing of maps to me. Does it to you? I, I just, I don't have experience in this. Does that look like something normal to you?
What does what look like something?
The, the current map, the way that, that the current districts are drawn?
It's difficult to say. I mean, sometimes cities have to be drawn in a certain way in order to capture the population that you need. So sometimes it's difficult to draw everything squarely. I have drawn counties that, where a commissioner's precinct may stretch all the way across the county, and that's just because of the majority, there's not a lot of population, and there may be a big city in the northern part of the county where we need to capture some population. So it's not inherently wrong or bad, it's something we can look at about balancing. And with the city, you know, it might have been drawn that way in order to comply with the Voting Rights Act and the non-retrogression standard that was in place in 2010, in order to maintain an African-American district or a Hispanic district.
That's what, that was gonna be my follow-up question, if you thought, I, I mean, because it kind of depends how you look at it, right? I mean, District 2, I guess, or the southwest ward is what we call it, but 2 on the map is obviously majority Hispanic. And then 1, the southeast, is obviously majority black. And I understand that you can use race as a consideration in order to comply with the Voting Rights Act, and so in that sense, it might have been for the purposes of making sure that a majority Hispanic population has representation in the city council, and same for black population. Or it could be packing, right? And so I wanted to ask your opinion on that. I'm not trying to beat anybody up or anything back from 2010, I just wanna figure out if there were things that we can do better this time around.
Yes, and I think i- i- if you look at breaking those up, sometimes it's difficult, particularly with Hispanic communities, because they don't, the Hispanic population in Texas generally came to Texas after segregation ended. And so they're not concentrated in particular areas of a city like African-American populations often are. And then, of course, over time, the African-American populations themselves have kind of grown throughout the city and are not as concentrated. So keeping a particular district Hispanic or African-American can be very difficult. And you look at trying to keep, you know, essentially the districts the way they are in keeping the minority communities intact as much as possible. So sometimes that may be kind of going across town to do it, but even that can be difficult because sometimes you may have to cross, for example, in order, because they have to be contiguous, you may have to absorb a certain amount of white population, for example, in order to reach a Hispanic pocket that may be next to the district you want to put it in, but, so I wouldn't necessarily say it's packing, and I wouldn't necessarily say it's cracking. I think it really just depends on, on how you look at it. You know, the African-American population in the city is really split between 1 and 2 for the most part. It's pretty heavily concentrated in 1. You know, if you broke it up out of 1, you could be accused of cracking in that situation. And so it, it's, it's really a delicate balance.
Okay. And then my last question for you, I mean, I'm assuming that you guys do this regularly, consult with governmental entities to, to help them with redistricting. And so my question to you is, are there any other criteria or guidelines that you've seen other cities, counties, school districts, whatever, use that you have found to be helpful that were not included in your presentation?
I've seen them use other criteria. I haven't particularly found them to be helpful. Typically, they will be something like including non-retrogression in their criteria. I've seen them, you know, use a criteria that says you should not consider where incumbents live. I don't think that's particularly helpful. So there are slight variations to it. I think the criteria we have are good. And the reason we have the criteria we have is because they're based on Supreme Court case law, and what the courts have said we should use as traditional districting criteria. So it doesn't mean that they are the only criteria you could use, but they are the, the tested criteria.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowden?
Thank you, Mayor. When I, when I first looked at the map, I, my first thought was, there was packing in Ward 1, southeast ward? But now my question is, did the voter's age population, do you believe it played a part in, in geographics of the Ward 1?
Generally speaking, the voting age population is gonna be roughly proportional to the overall population. That's typically more true with African-Americans, i- if we're looking at minorities than it is with Hispanics, just because Hispanics tend to be a younger population overall. That's not necessarily true in every city, but you can maybe make that kind of broad statement. But generally speaking, voting age populations tend to track pretty closely as a percentage of total population.
Well, basically, I don't, I don't know the numbers that you passed out originally, like Ward 1 was 8,400, and I'm thinking that's population, and the voting age population was 62, 64, which is pretty close to being, well, in the middle of the group on a high average. Geographic-wise, I know this has been in place for a while, but I do believe that one of the areas that I would like to see looked at and for a change to be made. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Bellinger.
I'd like, would you mind expounding on that? I'd like to hear the change, I mean, is it that you'd like to see?
Ward 4, or northwest ward? I think the population, I know they, geographic-wise, to include African-American in Ward 1 is why they went into Ward 4.
Right.
But generally speaking, I would like to see it spread it out more between 2 and 4.
You mean that section? You mean that section that looks kind of split up, split off?
Yes.
Between 2 and 4?
Yeah. But it may not be able to do that because of the population. We really, right now, don't know where to grow to us.
Well, the census data is there to know that.
Yes, sir. The growth was really, it appears to be in District 1, what we're calling District 1, and probably District 3 as well. Neither one of those by themselves are particularly out of balance. The real out of balance is that District 2 shrunk by 8 and 1/2%. It was 8 and 1/2% off of the norm. So either it lost population or it did not grow as fast as the others. District 4 is within, let's see, about 40 people of the ideal size. And District 3 is about 300 people of the ideal size, a little less than that. So 4 and 3 are generally, I mean, you could probably equal the population between the districts without touching 4 and 3 if you wanted to. What you really need to do is take some population from 1 and put it into 2. But overall, boost the population to 2 to get that negative 8 and 1/2% number up, so it's closer to the ideal size. So we really need to add population to 2 and probably take some population from 1 or 3.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and that's not the only way you can do it. You can do this a lot of different ways. But if you're looking at the easiest way with the least amount of changes, that's, I would probably look at 1 and 2 is probably my focal point.
Mr. Canizares?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. Mr. Arnold, that's part of the process that we're, that the council will be going through on November 16th is working with your staff, your GIS staff, your geographic information system staff, to work with those lines and move lines around to see where you pick up population, you lose populations. That's part of that process, is a redrawing process on your November 16th meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So what we will do when we come to the first drawing workshop is we'll consult with the city and develop an illustrative plan, we call it. So that'll be a starting place for us to look at, so that you all can see and the public can see a way of drawing the districts that puts the population in balance. It's not the only way, as I said, but it's really just a jumping off point for us. And then from there in that meeting, we'll make changes in real time to the map, and we will draw the lines, add territory to one district, take it away from a different district. And then as we do that, at the bottom of the screen, you'll have, you'll have the map at the top of the screen showing the changes we're making. And then at the bottom of the screen, you'll have essentially the same chart I showed you earlier, which is a spreadsheet that will update those population and racial and ethnic breakdowns in real time, so we can see what those changes did. So we can see not only the population that moved, but the percentages of each ethnicity that moved with it. And we'll just keep making changes like that until we reach a point where everyone's happy or where you want to take a break and go present the plan to the public and get public comment, come back, make some more changes, and just continue that process until we reach a point where everyone wants to vote on the map.
Mr. Bowden, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Bellinger?
I think the criteria that you shared with us looks really appropriate to me. I have nothing else to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. And let's see, we will consider a resolution adopting criteria for use in the 2021 redistricting process and a resolution adopting guidelines for public participation in the redistricting process. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved, Mr. Anderson?
Second.
I have a second, thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. You disappeared from my screen. Oh, okay.
I'll text him.
Okay. All right, we will move to B, receive an update and hold a discussion regarding the 87th Texas Legislative Session and subsequent special sessions. City Manager, Canizares?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, be really brief to allow Mr. Barnes to come up here and make some comments to you and hopefully certainly allow you to answer any questions you may have. Kelly Barnes represents the city in Nacogdoches with Hillco Partners. They are our legislative advocates that we use during legislative session and also during the interim session. As you know, this session was one that would not end, that started as normal in early January, ended at the end of May, and then they had three subsequent special sessions to hammer out a number of issues by Governor Abbott. We've used Kelly and his team on a number of things, not just legislatively. I also work with the various administrative agencies at the state. I mean, it's a big bureaucracy, and Mr. Barnes and his folks have been very helpful to get things across the finish line for us. And so with that, I wanted to turn it over to Kelly, let him make a few comments. And some of you have never met Kelly, but he's really done well for us. And there usually Larissa during the session. Larissa and I usually meet with him on a pretty regular basis, once every week, if not once every couple of weeks, to just go over updates of what's going on in the session. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barnes and let him make some comments to you and ask, have you asked any questions?
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Yeah, happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor and council. I wish I'd been here a little sooner. Echoing somewhere.
You sound good.
You do too.
There's a speaker outside somewhere.
A certain amount of gravitas there.
Yeah, right. I'll tell my wife that. Well, thank you all for having me tonight. I wish I would have been here in, you know, late May or June, but we kept, as Mario said, sticking around in Austin way too long. With three special sessions, you know, it's normally every other year, it's 140 days and they're gone. That was not the case at all. So we just got a break, October 18th. They gavelled out, so we're hopefully knock on wood in the clear until January 2023. But we'll see what happens. So got a presentation here. Can I just click it through? Okay, perfect. It's short and sweet, so. If I can do it just right here, click a button. There we go, perfect. So I wanted to highlight two different things tonight, one being some state agency assistance we've done for the city of Nacogdoches, and then kind of some broad topics from the legislative session. So four main agencies, and we've done a variety of work for all of them, but kind of the biggest, I would say, for your city has been the Texas Department of Emergency Management. You know, that's an agency that normally deals with hurricane response on the coast, weather issues, tornadoes across Texas, that's been their primary job. But when COVID hit, the governor kind of tasked them to be the agency to take care of about every state response. So we all know a lot of federal money was flowing down to the state and to local municipalities. And so TDM had criteria for what's an allowable expense, what's not an allowable expense. And I think we were able to help streamline the city's communication with TDM, executive staff at the top, to truly determine what's okay and what's not okay, because as we all know, a lot of these funds are going to be audited at some point down the line, since there was so much money the federal government pushed down. And so just providing that kind of streamlined communication for you guys to understand what was okay. TCQ, during the February winter storm, you know, critical infrastructure went offline all across the state, and your water treatment facility as well had a major issue. And so getting that back online, there's certain criteria that TCQ requires you to accomplish to get that going again. We were able to work with Mario and the executive director of the commission to determine how you could turn on certain sectors faster by testing those samples instead of testing the whole. So allowing you to get certain sectors on faster was something we worked on. And then Texas Department of Agriculture, that's something we're working on kind of currently, I would say. There's a revolving loan fund over there for small businesses, and it's been backlog for over a year, if not more, I think, Mario. And getting staff to recognize this is important and put it on the top of the agenda to get those funds moving and not providing repetitive material, which I think was the issue from us getting those funds out the door for you guys. And then TABC, the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission, I think it relates a little bit to COVID as well, that they changed so many restrictions on what's a bar, what's a restaurant, how do you get to be a restaurant if you're a bar? And so making sure that a lot of your local businesses were able to meet the new TABC criteria and not be penalized for doing something wrong. Any questions on that? Move on to the session. So as I mentioned, we started in January, ended in May, and then three more special sessions. The first one was supposed to be on election-related legislation. The Democrats broke quorum in that first session. So the first session was effectively dead. Second session, they came back, quorum was made. The election legislation was the primary topic of that session. And then the third special had always been redistricting. So I know you guys just got a real thorough presentation on how that looks. And you can imagine, you know, a state of 30 million people drawing Senate lines, House of Representatives lines and congressional lines in less than 30 days is interesting, to be blunt. So a couple of quick issues from the session I want to touch on with you guys. Economic development, a big issue that changes. Chapter 313s basically have been sunset. There were multiple opportunities to revive that and extend it down the line, and it got caught up in a lot of political discussions, basically, at the end. All that to say is that December 1st of 2022, there'll be no new 313 agreements. Now, what I think will happen is it'll be a top-of-the-line issue in January of 2023 to get going again, but there's going to be a lag. And so, you know, is there going to be an executive order from the governor or something later on? We'll see, but that's something to note for you guys. Alcohol-to-go, restaurants have seen a big boom, obviously allowing mixed beverage permit. Holders to sell alcohol to go, and then broadband, House Bill 5, that created a new broadband council. It's going to be at the comptroller's office, and they actually received $500 million in ARPA funds via the state legislature. So the big concern had always been, that's great, we're creating a broadband council, but are we going to fund it and really put some teeth into it? And they did. Electricity, a number of things passed and a number of things didn't pass, but SB 3 basically establishes the Texas Energy Reliability Council. And one of the big things is designating critical infrastructure to make sure that we don't have issues like last time with the water treatment facility or various other things across the state, because you guys weren't the only ones who had a major issue with that. Property taxes, also a number of things, but one recent thing from the last special session is that SJR 2 will be on the May ballot, and it'll increase the homestead exemption on the ISD portion of property taxes from 25 to 40, if approved in May, obviously, something to note. Two more issues I'll touch on, budget and local control. Texas passed a $200 billion budget in May. They got it done. And then obviously, we had a number of federal spending programs to take care of. The most recent one is the ARPA funds that the legislature addressed. I did a quick highlight of, I'm not going to go down each one, but you can see there's some things that are interesting to Nacogdoches, obviously rural hospital grants, tuition revenue bonds at higher education institutions, SFA will get in there. And then also, you know, the healthcare shortage we saw across the state, and antibody infusion centers and reimbursing for that was a big issue. And then local control, a couple of big issues this session. The camping ban probably took the most attention, I would say. It was primarily aimed at the city of Austin and some of their policies down there. So that's out there, creates kind of a statewide framework for camping in public places. And then other issues, but I would say, you know, speaking broadly on local control, rural cities got a little better situation than urban cities. You'll see a lot of the bills that pass, and I'm happy to provide more context later, but exemptions for rural cities and counties on a lot of issues that I'm not going to touch on because they don't impact you guys. And then the final thing, redistricting, I guess it's kind of timely with the presentation you guys just had, but if all of your incumbents are reelected, Travis Clardy will be your state representative, Robert Nichols will be your state senator, and then you'll obviously get a big change, and your congressman will be from Waco, Texas, Pete Sessions. So that's quite a shift from a geographic standpoint. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions on any topic that has your attention. I'll do my best to answer.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
I have one little question. Tell me about the Texas Department of Agriculture. What's holding all of that up, those funds?
Well, one thing, staff turnover. TDA turned over quite a bit of staff recently. And so you get someone new working on y'all's project who's emailing with Steve Barlet and asking for documents that you guys have provided multiple times already. And so it's that kind of backlog. And so elevating it to senior staff at the agency to say, hey, we've already provided this. Can we cut through a lot of this and get this moving? Because the city's ready to spend these funds. They don't want to jump and spend it without getting the full green light from you guys, so.
And will that affect any new grants? I mean, it should speed up if we apply for other funds from?
It should at TDA, but I mean, you'll see this at various state agencies. It's just breaking through sometimes to the top, because things get lost and they're short-staffed, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Bowden, I'm sorry, anything else, Ms. Bellinger?
Thank you, Mayor. The funds, COVID funds, are there a lot of funds still in waiting, I mean, to be spent?
Some there are, so they didn't spend all of the ARPA money. So there's, you know, 17 billion in this latest round, and we didn't spend it all. We spent about 13, 14 billion of it, I want to say, off the top of my head. Some of that they want to save towards the next session to, you know, fill any budget shortfalls that might exist or for future special. But it does, the governor does have the ability to use those funds now that the legislature is out. So yes, there is money still left.
Okay, and that federal fund, is GLO handling all of that? Are they coordinating all of that fund?
No, so the governor, on the ARPA stuff, the latest round, this is a governor's office. So he put it on the special session call for legislators to address. If he did not do that, he could have put out how he'd like, you know, this money to be spent. So technically, he does have the authority to go ahead and activate some of those funds.
Our representative, Travis Clardy, he also picked up all the way down to Newton, Texas, didn't he? Newton County?
He's got a much harder district to commute in, I would say.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
That's a good car.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. I saw that you mentioned SB 3 and the Texas Energy Reliability Council establishment and their monitoring of critical infrastructure, but I did not hear any explicit mention of the power grid. Was there anything done to address that specifically?
Well, I kind of tell you yes and no. So I think, and the press has reported a lot on this, there was no, you know, huge substantive reform to the grid that necessarily took place during session. But what they did is truly opened up the Public Utility Commission. So what you're seeing right now is the PUC Chairman, Peter Lake, he's actually from Tyler, Texas, who came in after the, you know, bad storm and everything. He's been given free rein to open the rulebook on power generators, gas generators, transmission. So they are doing some heavy work right now. But as far as what the legislature passed to fix any issues from the grid, it was, you know, the Board of ERCOT has to be from the state of Texas now as opposed to being from anywhere, things like that.
Administrative type?
I would say administrative type, but I will say the PUC is doing some heavy work right now that I think will put us in much better shape going into this winter season.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
No, the questions that I had were about ARPA funds and ERCOT reform. So you've already answered those, but thank you for the presentation. It has, I'm sure, been a challenging year to do what you do.
Yeah, I'm ready to spend time with my 10-month-old baby I had in the middle of session. She's never smart, so thank you all for having me.
I have one question. There's been some question of us regarding exterior building materials that can be used in residential construction. I know the legislature took some action on that, maybe a session or two ago. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so that was actually 2019 session. So I guess the 86th regular session would be the number on it. Basically, the Texas Association of Builders, very strong advocacy group in Austin, has members of their group who have, you know, building homes in Dallas and Houston and San Angelo and across the state. And we're dealing with different city code regulations on building materials. And so they basically, from their standpoint, was we need a uniform set of standards for our members across the state. And I think cities interpreted it- set of standards for our members across the state, and I think cities interpreted as, well, you're just taking that control away from us. But that was 2019, so basically, you know, you don't have the ability to regulate building materials at all unless it's, you know, historical, cultural area and/or hailstorm, windstorm areas in the path of a storm, you have the ability, but I mean, it's a national standard you get to use, which is very vague. You know, someone made a joke one day that you can have a home made out of hail bay next to a home, you know, a 4,000-square-foot new brick McMansion, according to law, and you can. So, yeah, it's an unfortunate situation for cities, to say the least.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, anything? Can you follow up? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to C. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and give staff direction regarding the establishment of an advisory comprehensive plan review committee and a downtown master plan review committee. City manager, Canizares.
Here we are again. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So really, just wanted to give a presentation to you all to kind of get some direction. Let me grab my pen. Excuse me. All right. Really, just to give, get some direction from council on the committees. We've been talking about the studies and the merits of the studies, et cetera, and so those are still yet to be decided as far as a contract, but there is that process on the committees that, you know, council gave direction back in earlier this summer of establishing some committees, and so really just wanted to spend some time and make sure that we're on the right track so that if we are going to move forward, we can go ahead and bring those things to fruition. So the first slide that I have here is just sort of the process, and so I don't know if it's been, just hasn't really been communicated, but I just wanted to share this with council. It's not overly complicated, but again, if we were to start, if council were to approve contracts for this process, I just wanted to kind of show the start and the finish, and you had this in your packet, the only change that was made from when the packet was sent over to you, literally all those two graphics, the start and the finish and the arrows and the green arrow and the red arrow, everything else is still the same. Just wanted to kind of just expand on that a little bit, just to articulate where it starts and when it stops. And so, again, if the contracts are approved in later next month, we would issue a notice to proceed. The consultant would theoretically get started on the projects. They would do the project kickoff, they would start getting, engaging citizens, doing a number of different things, whether it's holding community forums, do various surveys, all the various things that we've talked about in the past. This is the expectation that we would have of the consultants. You all said that citizen engagement is a large component of this process. This is important to you all, it's important to staff, it's important to the project, and so they would be doing that. Along the way, as ideas and input and feedback is received and given from the consultant to the citizens and to the citizens, from the citizens to the consultant, eventually these ideas would be presented and to a committee, which is what we're here to talk about, the committee process. And so as the committee reviews this information from the consultant, as they've engaged the community, as the community has come to these various meetings through a survey or meetings in the box that has been discussed before, that's where this information comes. And so it comes to the committee for review. Ultimately, if the committee hears this and sees this through the work with the consultant, work with the community and the citizens, ultimately, it would be passed on to the advisory boards, which would be your Planning and Zoning Commission and the downtown, excuse me, the Main Street Association. The intent is to be able to review those recommendations, ultimately through a public hearing process. They would then vote those out of committee, just like they would recommend any kind of Planning and Zoning Commission or other proposal, ultimately to you all as city council. There would be another public hearing process for that, and we could have, one, we could have multiple public hearings. It just depends on really how you all want to formulate that, but ultimately, you all do that review. If you all believe that there are issues with some of the recommendations made from the committees or from the advisory boards, you kick it back, and that's why we have that arrow in between, that back and forth. So as you get these things or as these ideas are formulated, then it's, again, as it's sent up to the city council, you all do public hearings, you get input from the citizens before you ultimately adopt the plan, and then hopefully we get to a point that you ultimately adopt the plan. And that's really where the process ends, and at that point is where staff then takes it on from there and starts working the plan as far as the recommendations and the goals and the objectives of this process. And so I just wanted to give you sort of a slight visual. I'm sorry that I'm not as articulate. I had a lot of help to put this little graphic together because you should have seen my original. It was pretty pathetic, my original graphic, because it was not that attractive. This is a lot more attractive, and as you see, there's public input and feedback along the way, because that is commitment that we've made throughout the whole process, and we will adhere to that. All these meetings that we would have would be open to the public, the committee meetings, obviously the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, the Main Street Association Board meetings would be open to the public, and certainly the meetings that you all have here in city council open to the public. So I'm going to advance this slide unless you all have any questions.
Do you want questions on this slide?
It's up to you. Sure.
My question is, where, or it's not my question, several people have asked this, where does the city's strategic priorities fit into this process? Because I know the three city council members who are currently, who were from the last city council, had expressed an interest in taking those to the public to, you know, add or to modify or whatever. Will those priorities just as-is be adopted to start this process, or how will that work?
Well, I'm sorry, what would be as-is or?
The strategic priorities that were voted on by the city.
Right. Well, I mean, that's, right, the seven of them. Well, I mean, we're utilizing those now for every agenda, just about every agenda item that you have before you, and so we would continue utilizing those throughout the process, unless there is an opportunity to change them from council, if that's what you all want to do.
So I think all three of the people had asked to have these brought before the whole, before the public to actually add to them or change them, and if we are going to be using them, I think we need to go ahead and have some kind of public discussion of the priorities and modification, because I can see they'll be listed on this report.
Well, I just welcome you asked the council, and we'll be happy to do that. That's what we need to be doing. So I mean, at the end of the day, if that's a policy direction that the council wants to do, and if we, we can certainly go in front of the public and talk about these things on those priorities, and if we need to continue doing that, we can certainly do that, but I mean, at this point, those priorities have been adopted, and that's what we've been using the last number of months.
Well, I would like us to do that, to take it before the public, to add priorities or to modify them prior to being utilized in the comprehensive plan.
So what would be the process?
To get these?
To fulfill her request?
Well, I mean, if we want to bring those priorities forward as far as get public input, we can certainly have public meetings about the priorities, the seven that have been adopted, and I apologize, I can't think of them off the top of my head, all of them. But they fall in line here into this process that we've been talking about. I know there's been discussions about historic preservation, and that's obviously key to our city. That's not something at any point in this conversation that we've had with any of the consultants, regardless whether it's DTJ or any of the consultants we've visited with. Historic preservation is not being diminished in this plan. It's not.
Well, I think we really have to clearly set, and that's just one of the priorities I think we really have to clearly set, but there are a few others that have been brought up, and I just personally, I don't think it's good for a city to adopt priorities without then taking them to the public for comment and addition and clarification. I think that's part of the democracy, democratic process. And actually, I'm not saying it, I actually heard all of the city council members say that back in the meeting when it was adopted.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can certainly take those to the community and have a meeting about that. Is that something that you all want to do before these plans are adopted? I mean, there are a number of priorities that fall right in line with this, like I said. Historic preservation, there's been a comment that was made certainly at your ward meeting, council member, and...
It was a ward, the ward meeting you're speaking of, or?
Yeah, yeah, that I heard at your ward meeting. And so, again, throughout the RFQ process, any of the conversations that we've been had, that we've had with any of the consultants, historic preservation was one of those, and it's not being diminished at all through this process. You know, so I don't really know.
Any other thoughts?
What else do you want to cover?
I don't know if I should hold, I have questions or comments that could touch on that particularly, that I can hold until later, or I can talk about it now. I don't really care.
Okay, well, let me just get to the presentation, and we can come back, right? So, and we'll come back to that. So again, you've seen this before, but just with any committee that we have, whether it's a board or an ad hoc or a temporary or a committee, and so, you know, it's about, obviously, regular staying engaged, being represented, a representative of the community, staying engaged, providing guidance, reviewing, making rotation on a number of planned elements to serve as host. There's some things that committee, those committee members will be able to open doors that certainly I can't as staff or a planning staff can, and certainly consulting can because they're not from here, but they will serve as host. We hope that we can, they can go through various places, whether it's at different facilities that they may have, whether it's a church or school district or just whatever case may be, just to be able to host these meetings. I think it's important that they help us in that regard, certainly to recruit hard-to-reach populations, beginning, again, because of the connections they have in the community, and then at the end, just maintain decorum and make sure that things are going smoothly and with respect as far as, because things can get charged depending on who comes and who discusses, and so it's just about, again, just maintaining sort of the peace throughout the process. This is one of the areas that would be important to get some governance, or excuse me, not governance, but consensus from council or at least some feedback, is to appointing members, well, you appoint the members within the chair and vice chair. Now, normally what happens, and we can continue doing this, that those chairs and vice chairs are appointed within the committee process, just because based on who can do it and who's willing to serve. My question really here is, if that's the case, do you all as council want to, as part of a resolution, do you want to name those individuals as the chair and vice chair once the committee does its appointment, if that makes any sense? Is that important for you all to ratify that at a future meeting? And so just a question, point of question, it's not that you have to land on it, but it's just one of those questions. Again, the intent is that the vice chair and chair, the chair and vice chair are appointed within the committee, but then you take it to the next level, and the council just ratifies that, if that's important to you. As mentioned, all meetings are open to the public. A quorum is a simple majority, again, if it's a 10-member person, a 10-member board, you know, get to six, so we can get started with business. We had talked about having council members serve on these committees, certainly want you all to serve as committee members, and I'll talk about the number, but you all serving as resources and voting members, because you all have the context of what's going on in the community, you have the ability, if we are allowed to proceed with this process, you all have the ability to bring those conversations to council when there is a staff presentation or an update, you can convey, yes, we are going through this process, things are going swimmingly well, or things are going off the rails since we need to kind of regroup. It just helps kind of that, kind of keep things on track, being a part of that. And then really, one of the areas that was in discussion with you all that I'd like to get some help with is if a planned element comes to the committee from a piece of input, and I can't explain to what it is, but just say a recommendation to move something that's important for the comp plan based on, or the downtown master plan based on input from the community and working with a consultant. Does the council want to see decisions or recommended policy items or elements on this process? Do you want to do it through consensus only? Do you want to do it through consensus only? Do you think it should just be a simple majority from the committee, or do you want to do a two-thirds vote? And I say vote, two-thirds vote of the members that are present. It's just really, what's your flavor as far as your wants, your desires, your expectation? I mean, it can go either way, but just, it's helpful because one of the things we would bring forward to you, if we go down this path, is we would bring a resolution to ratify the names on the committee plus the governance, so that we have that information to the committee. They kind of have their marching orders and what the expectations are, so they know exactly how to proceed. So I'm throwing that out as just feedback, and then, as mentioned, the final drafts would be forwarded, kind of the graphic, the final drafts would be forwarded to the advisory board, whether it's the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Main Street Board for their consideration, and then at the end, once this all is completed, in other words, when you all, if you all adopt either one or both of those plans, in theory, the committees end, they sunset, there's no reason to continue that process because they've completed their work, and they're done, and then we move on to other things. Here's the committee makeup. It's changed over the last few weeks or months. The only difference, you've seen some of these board reps and also to members from the community. The only difference that I added was the potentially of adding up to two council members per committee. In other words, would two of you want to serve on a downtown master plan, and would two of you want to serve on the comprehensive land use plan? And that's really it, is just to add that continuity to that and allow you all to participate and still meet the needs of the committee and again, as a resource. Because I think it's important to have council members present on these committees. As I mentioned, these would all be open to the public, and ultimately, council would appoint these members. The following is a list of folks that you all had recommended to serve on the comprehensive land use committee. I don't need to read the names, you can read it there for yourselves on the board or on the computer, but you do see that representation from the community, and then also some representation from SFA and ISD, Planning and Zoning Commissioner and an ECO rep. And then, and again, as I mentioned, excuse me, the only difference was having up to two members on city council. And then the downtown plan, again, you can see who you all have recommended, and then again, no one's been appointed yet, just all recommended names, and then up to two members serving from council. The only thing that's a little slightly, that's slightly different, it's just a recent change, is on the Convention and Visitors Board Representative. Before, the CVB Board Chair was John DeClarence. That has just recently changed within the last two or three weeks. It is now Shay Runnels is the CVB Board Chair, and so, and I've spoken to Shay just a little bit about that, and I've not spoken to John at all, and so really, the other question is, do you want me to go reach, speak with John and say, hey, you know, really the intent was to bring the board chair of that board, and so would you be okay if we worked with Shay? And then, you know, that's just, again, it's just a recent change that just happened within the last couple of weeks. So really, the next steps and discussion from you all is just kind of how do you want to set the direction on these committees? You know, do you want to proceed as presented based on some of the feedback points that I need from you about, is it okay that the two committees choose their chairs from within, and do you want to ratify those chair and board chair, chair and vice chair names? And then how do you want to proceed with moving things along through a consensus, through a simple majority or two-thirds or more of a supermajority? And then do you want to do, add two additional, do two council members per committee, and if so, who could those people be? If you all are okay with that, I just need some feedback on that. And then the next steps would be is present the names and do a resolution for you all at the December 7th meeting. That would be after the discussion regarding the contracts, and if we proceed with that, we would notify those that have been selected, and obviously those that weren't, we would let them know, thank them for their service, and then we would start to work with the committees. That's all I have.
Okay. We do not actually take action on this item tonight, but I would like to have any public comment regarding the committees, certainly. Can you come to the front?
I guess I can. I'm not that old, I can't. I'm probably the oldest one in the room, though.
Commissioner, I would like to say that I'm here as the president of the Federation of Women's Clubs. And if you're not familiar with that, we represent six hundred or more women in town. And I'd like to encourage you to put some of those ladies on your committees, for looking at the plan, the master plan, or the comprehensive plan, either. We have some very qualified individuals that are members of the clubs. We represent twenty-one clubs in town. I think we might have one or two men that belong to one of the clubs, but predominantly, it's all women. And we have retired physicians, retired lawyers, PhDs, businesswomen. So, if you'd consider some of those ladies, um, we would be very pleased. And if you need names of some of them, Mayor, I can provide those to you.
Would you do that, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't ask Ms. Shin for her name. Could you state your name, please?
I'm Brandy Cartwright, and I just, um, wanted to encourage you guys to pick somebody who, um, for the committees, who, um, advocates for parks. Um, I did not put my name in the, in the thing, because I was busy over the summer. But, um, but I hope that somebody on the, the board is, um, interested in parks and, and what those do for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, yes, sure. Come ahead and state your name, please.
Uh, my name is Erin Heidel. I was wondering if you could have some students and stuff represented some of the committees to make sure you get the younger good in.
SFA students, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I didn't come for this one in particular, but.
Yes, ma'am, state your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat Castella.
Thank you.
Ten oh nine Logan's Port, I'm always worried about three minutes. Um, the question I have is that we talked about a strategic plan, we're talking about committees, but yet, wh- what is the date that we're supposed to vote to make this comprehensive plan a reality?
The, the day that the contract will be presented is December the seventh.
So.
And it's also on that day that we would vote to formulate these, these committees.
And it's not really the committees I'm concerned about. It's, I, I'm not sure I understand when we were talking about the strategic planning, and so.
That's a sep- that's a separate issue. The, the, the plan that we vote on December the seventh is the, uh, whether to move forward with the contractor for the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan.
But isn't this strategic planning?
That's, that's, that's a separate issue. That's just something that came up tonight that, that we'll have to, that we'll discuss further.
Okay, because again, uh, there has been so much discussion and discourse regarding various things, particularly historic things. So, that's my confusion level. So, the committees are appointed after the group is hired to do the comprehensive plan.
There'll be two things voted on December the seventh. I don't know the order. One would be selecting the committees, and then the second would be, or, or the other would be voting on whether or not to hire the contractor to do the plan.
Okay, thank you, because I was not clear on that.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, council. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a, a question. I agree that that graphic was really beautiful, that people helped you put together.
Uh, we'll pass that on.
Um, but it confused me, uh, there is one part of it that confused me a little bit.
You may go to it?
Sure. So, I'm, I'm, I'm like Ms. Castella, actually. I'm trying to wrap my brain around, a little bit around timeline. Um, and the, the, this makes it seem like the committees don't really get engaged until later on, midway through the process. Is that actua- is that, is that accurate, or that was just for purposes of?
It's really just for illustrative purposes.
Okay, okay.
Because it's just really hard to, and again, I'm not a graphics person, to, to be able to superimpose different things. But a lot of it's working concurrently.
Right.
Together, and so.
Um, and so, then regarding, um, regarding that timeline, what the mayor said was, so on December seventh, we'll vote on the contract and also on appointing the committees.
Correct.
And then, if that sails through, what is the date that the project actually gets started?
Well, you know, it's December seventh, so we'll have to get through the holidays. And so, more than likely, it will be after the first of the year. And so, I don't have an exact date yet. Um, just trying to work through some of the logistics of that, but, but we would probably begin sometime after the first of the year to go ahead and get, get everyone formula- you know, everyone, uh, you know, trying to find dates to get everybody together and, and get started. I just don't have that. We will have that certainly for December the seventh, or I can follow up and see if we've got an exact date, but I don't have that with me right now.
Um, the, the reason that I ask is because I, I'm interested to know about, um, how much lag time there's going to be. Um, some concern that we have heard is about needing more community engagement on the front end, to get more community buy-in. And it feels like this has been going on for months, and all of these months, we could have been doing that. Um, and, um, uh, a- a- and, and I mean, I get why we haven't been, it's because we've been trying to hammer this part out. But I'm wondering now about, um, the lag time in between we, in between when council says, okay, let's go for it. And, and when the actual, actual work starts. And the reason is, is I'm wondering whether we can engage committees earlier on, like before the consultant shows up to town and starts doing their thing, um, for purposes of community buy-in, maybe perhaps for purposes of, of, of the strategic priorities, if that's something the council, um, wanted to, to get public input and buy-in from. Um, is, is that a realistic possibility?
Certainly can be. Um, I mean, we're, obviously, it's November second, so we can certainly, i- if you all feel comfortable, we can certainly bring, uh, those committees to meet sooner. Uh, but, you know, until the council makes these appointments, at this point, it's just sort of answering questions occasionally. Hey, what's the status? Where are we on this process? And it's, we haven't brought, we have not brought anything forward for you all to vote on. And if you all feel comfortable doing that, we can certainly put something on your, um, November council meeting. Uh, you only have another one, you know, that your second meeting in November, to, to ratify these names in this process, or whatever process you want to choose, and, and start working with them. We can certainly do this informally and reach out to them and, and, and get some input from them, whether it's through, uh, email, or we can bring these folks to the org- to the table, to the organization, and, or meet with them at, at a location, whether it's at CBTX, or the rec center, or some other location, to start working with these committees, knowing that they haven't been formally approved, but we can start working with them to try to get this input. I mean, I think one of the efforts that we'll be doing with this consultant is, is with, really with any consultant, is, um, I mean, they're going to get that kind of input. What is important to the committee, or excuse me, to the community? Are there things missing from the, the strategies that the previous council voted on? And if there are, then obviously, that's going to be a part of the process. If something that's important to them is, is, uh, neighborhood integrity and, and, or neighborhood preservation, not necessarily just historic preservation, but neighborhood preservation.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be an important piece of that. I don't think any of those areas of input are going to get lost. Um, you know, if you look at our strategic plan, we, we, you all crafted seven, I say you all, the council at the time crafted seven. Uh, there are a number of things that, that weren't necessarily adopted strategies, but are important for the council. I would assume public safety is important for the council. That wasn't adopted as a strategy. You know, finan- you know, uh, financial stewardship, or, uh, uh, was, is important. I mean, we have budgets, we have fiscal constraints, we have to work within our means. That wasn't adopted. So, there are a lot of different things that I think, uh, are just inherent in what we do, that we're not going to lose sight of who we are. That is not something that's going to be lost by this administration, being me and my staff. We are not going to lose sight that we are the oldest town in Texas. That is something that's near and dear to our community, is baked in our history. It's not going to be lost sight of that. And so, we have to continue perpetuating the things that made us special, and we will continue doing so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with the city, I mean, either alongside with or as this, this contract, um, process is moving forward. I don't have a problem with, with staff hosting public meetings and hearings to, to discuss the strategic priorities. I feel pretty comfortable with them. I mean, they didn't happen in a vacuum. I, I agree with you, one, that, that none of this means that historical preservation isn't important. Um, and, um, sure, it should be adopted explicitly as a strategic priority. Um, but otherwise, I feel, I mean, I feel comfortable with the priorities that council set forth in that February meeting. Like I said, they didn't happen in, in, in a vacuum. It's not like, any, and I'm not saying that this is being, this is the implication, but it's not like any of us showed up and said, I feel like this is what I kind of want to do with it. And it's, this is my own personal feel. I mean, it, it was done with a lot of thought and, um, and, and, and intention, and speaking to our own communities and constituents about things that are important. And so, I feel good about them. I think that it would be fine to host public, um, hearings. I don't think that they necessarily, that we necessarily, for those, have to wait for this to get jump-started. In fact, I think that it might be helpful to, um, in our goal to get some more community buy-in moving forward. Um, but yeah, I don't have a problem with those. And then, I, I don't have any more questions, but just so that the council knows my take on the specific questions that you had, Mario. Um, on the, the committees choosing their own chair and vice chair, I, I, I'm internally, I'm fine with that. Um, ratifying, then bringing it to council to ratify, I, I guess that would be for the purposes of creating more accountability and, and, and weight to it, which I, I would be fine with. Um, and then your, your other question, well, adding the two council members, I think, is a good idea to each committee. And then your last one on the consensus versus two-thirds vote versus simple majority. By consensus, do you mean a unanimous?
No, no, ma'am.
But what do you mean?
It's just, you know, consensus is that, that you, 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 you reach consensus by, by trying to get at least all thoughts on the table as best you can, and try to get something that people can agree on. It may not necessarily be, be unanimous, but, but people get around the idea that, that they can, that they can ultimately, uh, move an idea forward, because they felt like they were heard, they understood where things were going, and, and they can get that, that buy-in. And, and again, they may not have gotten everything they wanted, but they got a lot of what they wanted in this process.
Okay. Um.
And, and, and again, it's, it's just, it's how the chair facilitates the meeting, you know? And again, if there is just an issue that's very charged, and it's just kind of a make or break kind of thing, it's how the chair or vice chair runs the meeting and says, you know, you know, what are your thoughts? It's no different than, than you all, when you all walk, walk, uh, work with, with direction. You're not taking action, you're, you're gaining some consensus around what does the majority of the council want to do on a specific issue, especially when you're not taking a vote.
Right. Um, I mean, I guess, so if we're talking about sixteen and fifteen people on each committee, that includes the two extra council members?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I feel like I would be fine with consensus, or two-thirds probably would be where I would lean. Um, but I, I actually don't feel like super strongly about it, and I'm open to hearing other people's opinions. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, I, I am also perfectly fine with revisiting in public form. Not necessarily revisiting, but, uh, presenting the, the strategic, um, priorities that we have, have, uh, set forth in the past. And I, I agree that there are, um, certain overarching, um, priorities that are just inherent in this, in the community, like public safety and, and, uh, historic preservation. I, I think, you know, if, if they need to be said, then we can say them, but I don't think they need to be said, really. And now, not everybody's going to have the same priorities always, but, uh, but I think those are, are things that are, um, so, so obvious as to, to not necessarily need to be in print. But, um, looking at the, the committee governance, um, I, I would tend to agree that I, I'm fine with, with a consensus approach. Um, um, and if, if we feel like we need a clear vote, um, I think a two-thirds vote, um, would be the way to go, rather than simple majority, because there's, there's too much room for, for divisiveness with a, a simple majority, I'm afraid. On other issues, you know, as far as the committee governance, I would, I would almost, you know, it, if the, the sole purpose of council in, in, uh, choo- the choice of chair and vice chair is merely to ratify the committee's choice itself, then I'm fine with that. I don't think that beyond council members being present, um, on those committees, I don't, I, I think they need to have some, some independence, um, some autonomy from council. Um, and that, uh, they, they need to, to choose their, their leadership for themselves. Um, that's, that's my take on it.
Mayor, ma- may I at least speak freely for just a second, and maybe you go behind? My, my hope that it would not, that again, if two members of council are present, that, that it's not the council members that are the vice chair and vice chair, because.
Right, right.
Naturally, committees tend to lean on the elected official.
I think that, that should be clear, um, in, in our governance, is, is that council members are, are not eligible for those, those positions on the committees.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, and basically, what I was saying was that, um, you know, that I, I think that choice needs to be made by the committees themselves.
Okay.
And not, um, not council, and the council needs to remain, um, more in advisory capacity on the, the committees, um, in my opinion, anyway, other than having a vote on the, on the committees.
Okay, very good.
And beyond that, that's all for me now.
Thank you. Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. On the, uh, the wheel, the pinwheel. I was, I was a little disappointed that there was not more public hearing. Whether it's involved with the city council being there, or with the committee themselves. I would like to see more in, uh.
We can definitely do that.
And as far as, um, the governance, the, uh, the size of the committee, and I think what the public is looking for is not what we have set before us. Uh, there's probably quite a few more, uh, that would like to be on the committee, which I, I really have no issue with, except that the larger your committee get. Let me just, for instance, Dead Cock. We have, uh, fifty-two members on the Dead Cock board. And at first, it was two-thirds members to have a quorum and establish vote. Well, we missed a lot of those, because the larger your committees are, the less people show up. And so, we now have it's upper majority. So, but it's been stated by some of the citizens that we're missing out on some potentially, uh, valuable assets by not having their name on this committee.
Okay. I mean, we can certainly add to it, um, if you all see fit. We can certainly work with Ms. Shin and, and, uh, the, the lady that came and spoke about adding someone from the parks. If we don't know, I mean, again, I don't know all the representatives and folks that are here. There, I'm sure some of them are park advocates, but I'm not certain if we need someone from the Parks Board, or if we need someone from the Trails community, or, or someone from that, that area, we can certainly do. It's just really, just how you all want to proceed.
And don't forget SFA.
SFA. Well, we have a lot of representation, as we say, but certainly, from the students' perspective, yeah.
Um, can I jump in real quick?
Okay, go ahead.
You had asked about public hearings. Um, I just want to point out that the two public hearings that are on the flow chart, or those are requirements of law for those two bodies to act on the plan. And that trying to describe, i- i- it's not saying that's the only two times that the public will be asked to participate. Uh, the public should be engaging throughout the process, and all of the meetings of the committees in developing the plan should be public or open meetings, but nothing called as a public hearing and has a legal context and a legal meaning to it, that I don't appreciate. I don't think that's what you meant. I think you just want to make sure the. I think you just wanna make sure the public was coming.
Exactly.
All right.
Yeah, well aware of everything that's going on.
Right, and I think that's what the process, those first three parts of the pie are really an iterative process of getting the public engaged, having meetings about particular topics, and then getting feedback and sort of a back and forth going that then gets distilled to a plan that gets presented as a plan that has a public hearing attached to it, which has legal significance in the code.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to be clear on what that was.
Okay, thank you. On the two city council members?
Yes, sir.
Now, what is their purpose of being on there?
Really, just as a connection point, serve as a resource, obviously. I mean, you all have, you all represent large areas of the, of the community, the organization of this community. You all have, obviously, you're here, you hear what's going on, you see what's happening on a regular basis for your agendas and what's coming from planning and zoning. You hear a lot of things from the community about the issues. And so really, it's that, again, it's just that extended of that connection point to serve on those committees, to be a resource, and to make sure that if things are being bounced off, that you hear what's going on, you give input as to what you believe is kind of the wants and desires of the city council. Again, without fully representing them, but you are representing them because you're council members. And again, at the end, it's just being a resource, but not being such a resource that it's dominated. Because, again, I'm just telling you, I've worked with committees where there are council members, and not because I was an employee, I was serving on a, as a volunteer for a variety of, whether it's bond programs, for school district, or for other communities. And a lot of times, when a council member or a board member of the respective ISD speaks, people listen. And you all have a lot of sway and influence, and so that's great. But it's important, I think, to have that input from the committee members so they can speak freely and be able to participate in the process.
Yeah, I just don't want the public to think that we have two city council members on the comprehensive plan. That's the only two city council members they can go to for an input to be forwarded on.
Right. No, I mean, I think the intent is, if, you know, again, if you all want to do that, and if you don't wanna have anybody on council participate, that's fine as well. It was just an idea that was brought to the table. We've been kinda moving that along the last number of months, and it's just as an opportunity as being a resource.
Just gonna add that you could have two of you participate without having to do all of the Open Meetings Act requirements of recording the meeting at public notice and all of that. You're gonna get lots of publicity for every one of the meetings, but it doesn't have to meet the statutory requirements for public notice. And that's why two is the max, because if you have three, you've got a quorum, and we have to go through all of that.
But each meeting is gonna be put out for public notice anyway, right?
They will all be publicly noticed and advertised, and there will likely be a way of recording them, but it doesn't fall under the statutory requirements, and we don't get tripped up if we goof.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Ballinger?
Oh, are you finished? If we came in disguise, could we? Just kidding. So, we couldn't come to a meeting where the other two are present, even if we are quiet or whatever, it just, God, that's just.
Well, and even if you didn't have any members, and you all five showed up, I could only let two of you in.
Wow.
I mean, it's just, it's.
I do have my Halloween costume.
So, maybe non-voting members, and then we could sign up to go?
I think he's saying no.
No, 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 I'm not saying, just two of us can sign up to go?
If all of you show up, or any number of you show up.
No, just two of us could sign up to go. It would be limited to two of us signing up to go, and we're non-voters. So Kathleen and I sign up to go to the downtown plan meeting. The other three can't go. Is that okay? And then next time, maybe Roy and Amelia sign up to go to that meeting.
You're talking about circulating instead of having two.
Assigned.
Assigned.
I think it's more helpful, probably, to have some continuity, I think.
It's hard to focus on the task at hand if we're kinda rotating around in different groups.
So, what your colleague says is apropos, but there's no legal directive one way or the other. The only legal directive is only two of you.
I'm sorry.
I'll tell you.
Continue.
So, I wanted to, first of all, clarify about the strategic priorities. I'm not, I think you all had a very, very good, solid beginning, and I really appreciate it, and so do all the people who are asking questions about strategic priorities. But we did, I have, I happen to have, in the Northeast Ward, a very, very active group of people. And so they asked me to hold, they've been asking me a lot of questions, so I thought it was easier to hold a meeting of the Northeast Ward, and this did come up, and we did talk about it. And there, I think there are some minor things throughout, and so there's some feedback that they'd like to have for the strategic priorities, and I think it's just really appropriate. And I love your idea of a little, you know, between times, maybe there's a place to have that. We could also forward some of the recommendations, or hold another ward meeting to clarify some of the questions. It was not the basic, it was not the whole topic of the whole. But there were some very specific, you know, for example, like a downtown entertainment. What do we mean by entertainment? Can we also have something else in the downtown rather than entertain? You see what I'm saying? Just some clarifying things. So, I think it'd be really, really appropriate to go ahead and have a meeting, and people will feel much more engaged if they can participate in the priorities. That's a big issue for them. As far as consensus, I really liked your explanation of consensus. I thought that was very, very helpful, and I just wanted to add a piece to it that when the philosophy is consensus is more of a process. I think you described it very well, it's a process rather than like a vote. And so when we work with consensus, if there's an issue, for example, when we were discussing, I think Mayor Mize, you brought up, maybe we could do things in sequential order. And then, Mr. Bolden, you brought up another contractor that was recommended. But with consensus, then each of those issues would have been discussed to have consensus around, do we do it sequentially, or do we do one big contract? Do we look at this contractor? So, in consensus, you might peel off an issue. Does that make sense? So, if we can see there's an issue of concern, you might peel that one off and say, maybe we should focus on this street. What do we think about this street? What do we think about the preservation and a renewal of some of the streets that have been designated as historic for some of our communities? The specific communities, what do we, Shawnee Street I'm thinking of, and, you know, other things like that. You could peel that off and then pull it aside, and then bring consensus around that. So that's why, I don't know if I'm making myself very clear, but I do appreciate a consensus approach so that things aren't just folded in and moved forward when there are concerns.
Absolutely. There are a lot of times that, say you have ten issues and eight are slam dunks, and you're kinda able to get through that pretty quickly. You focus on the last two that are the more difficult issues to discuss, and you may dwell on that for a while, and work through the issues until you get the consensus you need to move it forward.
And I think it's, thank you, that's very helpful. And I think it's helpful to us as a city council to find the areas where there was not consensus, and for us to think through those areas ourselves as a council. And, you know, maybe the committee can deal with ninety-nine percent, but then there's a one percent that is really tricky, that we might have to work on, on something.
I mean, to me, that's where our participation on the committees, our presence there, lets us come back and inform all of council on those issues that maybe don't have that full consensus that we'd like to see.
Precisely. Great, great way to put it. You put it much better than I did. As for the committee makeup, I have heard from a number of people that we really should have the Bright Foundation represented. And so I would like to see the Bright Foundation represented both on the downtown, because they've done a whole lot of work downtown, but also on the major comprehensive plan, because they've done work throughout there. So I would like to see that, and I'd like to see a representative from the Federation of Women's Club, knowing that this does add to the committee membership, both on downtown and in the whole comprehensive planning community. And then possibly the chair of the Parks Advocacy League. I would rather see somebody who is a citizen volunteer rather than somebody, you know, on parks. And while I love our students, and I agree, I think there was so much in the presentation about student input. And there were so many mechanisms to get student input. I felt comfortable that if we go with that contractor, we will get quite a bit of student input.
Yeah, and my concern with that is that students come and go, this is going to be a lengthy process, and you can't necessarily be certain that.
And if I can address on the students, and again, if I may, and again, on the comprehensive plan review, that's one of the reasons why we have, if you see the SFA SU rep, Carrie Charlie, and I don't, well, I don't know Mrs. Charlie. My understanding is she's got that, you know, she does work closely with the president's office, but also with students through, I think, I believe it's over auxiliary services, which is the dorms and the cafeteria, those auxiliary services. So I think able to kinda work in that area and pull students to bring, hey, we're gonna be on campus, or they're gonna be on campus getting input, so is there a way to garner support, whether it's at the Student Center or some other places to? So again, I think we can get to that input, but if you are all looking for student activity on these committees, be happy to do that, but.
To me, the consultants seem to have a pretty good grasp on the need for student input and the need for that involvement in the process.
I actually disagree. Not that the consultant had a good grasp on it, but I think that you could use that explanation for literally every segment of this community. You could say they had a good grasp on really engaging ex-community, so we don't have to include them in that committee. And so I actually don't think that that's a good reason to have a student off. I also think that you can put someone on there who isn't going to, you know, who isn't about to graduate and move, right? Like, the student body is very organized, and they have student government, they have, I mean, a lot of clubs. And so I remember in college being super involved and super organized and together, and I think that there would be not a difficult way to find a student to put on the committee, on each committee. And I think that it would be important. I think that if we're already talking about adding somebody from the Bright Foundation, and if we're already talking about adding somebody from the Federation of Women, that I think that the SFA students should have a chair, too.
I have one other, one other, right? That's okay. That's all right. Instead of sunsetting these committees, I think it might be wise to keep them, partly because we're very concerned with implementation. And so I would rather not see them having, you know, sayonara, you know, but keep them.
Okay. Would there be an expectation that they meet periodically to update? Okay.
And they could transform, too. We need to, I think so. I think we need that accountability for implementation. I think that's a great idea.
Would it be okay, and again, I'm not trying to, I don't disagree, we could certainly do that. When we get towards the end, is, I mean, because people may get tired and just tired or done themselves, and so can we, and especially if we're losing students, because again, they're transitioning out. Could we come back to the council to figure out how we have sort of an oversight committee, if that makes sense, of these plans? Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We can revisit any of these things.
Right.
Different skill set that, you know, someone has on that group, yeah. But I think we need that. I think that's a great idea.
And it's not just accountability, it's implementation is hard. So, it needs us to implement. Some of these things require a lot of funds, or require grant writing, or require substantial collaboration. So, that is a good part to, I like community engagement.
Absolutely.
Do you?
Thanks. I think that's, I have notes everywhere, but I think that covers it.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, just as a recap, that way I'm not missing something. As far as, and I'll go back here, pardon my back and forth here. So, everyone's good with the committees themselves, obviously picking their chair and vice chair, and they'll come back to council at some point, pretty quick. Obviously, meetings open to the public. Quorum, in other words, getting the groups to actually meet and conduct business, a simple quorum is just a simple majority to conduct business. You all feel comfortable with consensus to move an issue forward on these committees? And certainly, and again, we can certainly, when we get to that process, we can talk about what does consensus mean, and how do you get there, just the explanation of what that is. Again, not to belittle anyone's intelligence, but just to make sure that consensus doesn't mean that we have to unanimously vote. I mean, there's some things that we can move forward, and some things we might need to dwell on for a while until we get there. That's okay. Just wanna make sure. And then we mentioned about not sunsetting, but maybe revisiting that, and maybe more, I'll talk to Mr. Kirkland, and I'll see how we can make that happen, how it gets revisited as far as implementation and oversight. I heard of potentially adding four additional people per committee, is that correct? So, if I heard correctly, the Federation of Women, a Parks Advocate League person represented the chair, or someone in that Parks arena, and I can work with Brian Bray on one of those two individuals. I heard the.
I would rather, well, first of all, my recommendation was not to have a Parks Advocacy League person downtown, but maybe we should. But I would rather the Parks Advocacy League choose their member, does that make sense, rather than?
But you want that person, you want that group represented on the comp plan, not the downtown?
I mean, that, yes, definitely for the comprehensive plan, and possibly downtown, but I wasn't thinking that when I made that recommendation. But I do think that, for example, the Bright Foundation should choose who they want on, to be represented on both those committees. And the Federation of Women's Club should choose who they want on both those committees, rather than us choosing a representative from them.
No, I would go with your end directly and just see who they'd like. And then, or whenever you can, however you all would like for me to do that. And then, didn't I hear two SFA, two SFA student reps?
You probably need to talk about it.
Both? Do you think comp in downtown? Probably?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, if we're going to have direct representation, then I think one on each.
So, it looks like we're adding four people to the comp plan, and potentially three, maybe four people to the downtown plan on the Parks Advocacy component, correct? Just wanna make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're going to go to these groups, I think.
Let them participate both.
There are things that apply in both arenas.
Perfect. That makes it easier. That makes it easier. And then as far as council members, who wants to play? Who wants to participate? Knowing that we're trying to keep two and two, so again, as Mr. Kirkland said, to not make any issue from an Open Meetings Act component, but who wants to participate in these committees?
So, if we have to choose, obviously, we have to choose. I think I'd rather do the larger comprehensive plan.
How, I mean, how do you wanna do this? Are you asking us to give, to say where we wanna be? Do you have?
I mean, I have my ideas, just because of what I know of you all. And, but I don't wanna speak for you either, so.
Well, I'm agreeing to what you suggested to me.
Oh, okay.
A week, two weeks ago, so, just to clarify, that's what.
I'm perfectly willing to do it if I. If I were to choose, probably the comp plan, but I'm willing to serve on either.
Okay.
I'm looking at the comprehensive plan. I feel like I'd be more valuable to my community as a whole if I was on the comp plan.
Yeah, so. You're good.
Wherever you want.
Okay, downtown?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
And either or none for me is fine. I'll go wherever I need to be.
You're our tiebreaker. So, all right, that's all I have. So we're looking, bringing this to you all on December the 7th. We'll work with our team on getting some, maybe some meeting schedule here shortly on the priorities, just to kind of, A, provide some clarity, explanation. Certainly, all these topics will be brought forward as part of the consultant's process to make sure that those things aren't missed. Because again, all those things are priority for us, whether it's public safety, finances, historic preservation, neighborhood. I mean, all those are inherent. Parks, I mean, we didn't even touched on quality of life, some of the quality of life issues, and those are important, important for all of us. But that's the intent of those strategies and those priorities, and we'll continue making those a major focus. Yes, ma'am?
These opinions that I've just given does not mean that I don't have concerns, serious concerns about the entire comprehensive plan, including the things I mentioned earlier. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Understood. All right. That's all I have. Thank you. And then, and then we're good with making sure everyone's good and getting with Shay Runnels to, instead of John, just because of the... Very good. Thank you all.
Okay, we will move on to D. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and give staff direction on purging uncollectible fines in cases. City Attorney Kirkland.
Good evening, guys. I know the Astros are either about to start or have started.
Have, have.
Seven oh nine.
Is that what you've got there on your computer?
I'm about to, it's about to be.
So I will try to be as brief as I can while giving you the information I need you to have. And I also want to tell you, I'm not asking you to vote on anything tonight. This is by way of a report to tell you what I'm doing. And it is part of an ongoing process that Judge Watson and I have engaged in in finding and bringing best practices and best, well, best practices and making sure we're current with the law in the municipal court operations. If you recall, a couple of months ago, I brought you a contract called the Scoff Law Contract, where we added another tool to our tool belt of collections. Another thing that happens in collecting municipal court fines, fees, cases, is that periodically, the old stuff gets chumped, gets tossed off. And there's lots of reasons behind that. And I'll start with simply just explaining how you get a warrant issued in municipal courts. There's two possible ways it can happen. One is you either agree to or are ordered to pay a fine, and you don't. And that's a type of warrant that's known as a KPS pro fine, which allows a police officer to go out and take you wherever you happen to be found and put you in jail until you have paid off your fine. It is a way of adding teeth to fine-only offenses. But for municipal courts, it is always starting with a fine. And the legislature and the entire body of law says these are things that are important, but they're not important enough to lock you up in the first instance. They're things that are just used as tools of making sure we're getting your attention, and that's what the fine is all about. I know whenever we talk about money in the context of anything the city does, that means we're going to generate a number, it goes on a balance sheet, it goes in a budget. And that becomes a driving force in discussions about those operations. And this is one area where you have to not do that. This is all about public safety, and the money is part of making sure that the programs that are implemented through there are effective and have some teeth to get people's attention. This is all about creating public safety. So one way you get it is through this KPS pro fine. The other way is where you're told to show up in court, and you do not. And that's called a failure to appear warrant. The KPS pro fine means that the process is essentially complete, and all that's left is collecting the money. Failure to appear warrant is the process hasn't even begun yet. So that if you are picked up on a failure to appear warrant, you are taken before the judge, and you are told what you're charged, and you enter a plea, and you have a right to have a trial, which puts me to work doing fun things like, you know, finding witnesses, finding the law, and making sure we're prepared to prosecute a case. That is really fun when it's fresh and new in everybody's mind. It's great. It's also really effective in driving public safety when we can focus on the stuff that's new. Studies from all the various justice organizations out there are that the, holding someone accountable for their actions in closest, closest to the time that they have done those actions is the most effective way of changing their behavior, if that's what the goal of the program is. And that's what the goal of our program is. So we want to be able to focus on the stuff that's fresh and new, not the stuff that's old and stale. So you get a KPS pro fine, you have your initial appearance, you enter your plea, you get a KPS pro fine, or you don't show up. It goes to warrants. Warrant is a tool for collections and getting people's attention. That requires sending a police officer out to grab the person or apprehending the person somewhere along the way in their day. Most municipal court class C warrants are actually served or collected when officers encounter a defendant again. So you fail to show up for your last speeding ticket, you get stopped for the next speeding ticket. Chances are, the officer will be able to take you directly to the court rather than giving you a citation and telling you to show up. Those are possibilities that come into play. But the threat of being dragged off out of your day is an effective tool for collection. So that's one. That's the next step. If the warrant isn't served on someone, then at some point, this is, I think we're at 90 days, we refer their case to a collections agency, who then engages all the various search devices to help try to find them, and then sends them letters and advises them, there's a warrant out for your arrest. You need to come take care of this. So that's for the people who are like me, absent-minded and forgetful and need reminders. I also need people to call me and tell me to go to places. You all have witnessed, I need Jan to tell me when to show up here. So that's the next step, is the warrant, then the collections agency, and there's phone calls from court staff, as well as now we have a part-time bailiff who is also making phone calls to collect on warrants. Your next step then goes to, we report it to something known as Omnibase, which is the central data system for the state of Texas. It puts a hold on a person's ability to renew their license until they address the warrant. So they either have to come pay their fine, if it's a KPS pro fine, or they have to appear in court and make another promise to appear, and then follow through on that process. The holds in Omnibase don't get lifted until the warrant is resolved. And that would catch, anybody that is engaging in getting a driver's license should catch them within seven years, because that's the cycle, is every seven years. Then the last thing that happens is the Scoff Law. The last piece that we've added to that is the Scoff Law program, which we brought to you a couple of months ago, which allows us to report it to a database that puts a hold on their registrations. So people that are renewing their registrations on their cars, which we have to do every year, they get told that they have to come deal with their warrant before they can do that. So these are the steps that we use to process and collect on warrants. By the time you've gone through the Omnibase cycle, the seven years, you are pretty much at the point of determining that this person is either not findable or has dropped out of the system in such a way that they're not being encountered again, or they've left the jurisdiction and they're no longer in our community. And so the idea of keeping a case around against someone who's no longer in the community is just simply dead weight on the system, and we need to get rid of it. Many cities go through periodic purges. They'll go through what's called a warrant roundup, which has many different forms. Sometimes it's actually officers going out door-to-door, knocking on places. That's not been the recommended course of action for some time, but it used to be. And then once they've gone through and done something through the warrant roundup process, they make a determination that the people that they hadn't found are not in the community anymore and are no longer something we should carry in our system. In the last legislative session, not this one, but I think the one before this, the state actually adopted a statute allowing courts to just simply declare that any KPS pro fine that's been outstanding for more than 15 years can be declared uncollectible, and those can be purged from the system. So what we are doing is that is something that hasn't been done in our system for a long time, and none of the folks that I've talked to can recall it happening in our system, is we are taking those old cases and we're purging them from the system. So anything that is over 15 years old in terms of a KPS pro fine is being purged from the system and declared uncollectible. And anything that is over 10 years old on a failure to appear warrant is going to be purged from the system as well. So that's what's going on, and that's the process that you're going on, that we are beginning. This will show up at the end of next year on the financial report with a write-off number. And I don't want you to focus on that number, because that number was never real anyway. Even with KPS pro fines, people have agreed to pay a fine. Whatever has happened, they haven't paid it. The way many places those fines get paid off is where people just go and spend the night in jail, and the case gets reduced by their time in jail. That's not a particularly effective way of doing anything, and it's certainly costing you money to collect on something. You're not getting any money in the end. And so that's what we're doing, and I wanted you to know that. I wanted you to hear directly from me. With respect to the failure to appear fines, warrants at 10 years, my memory, of course, is not good for yesterday. But at 10 years, it really is pushing the limits of people's memories to give credible testimony. And your officers do a really good job of taking good notes so that they have things to refresh their recollections. But I also have to have the officer that wrote those notes to prosecute that case. And you've had a great deal of turnover. So we selected the 10-year level because we felt that gave the full cycle of possibilities to get these folks in the system and a little bit of fudge. So that's why we picked the 10-year number. So that's happening. When people start asking you questions, that's what it's about. It's so we can get rid of the stuff that is dragging on the system and focus on what is current, real, that will make a real impact in our community.
Okay. Any comments, any questions?
Thank you for taking the initiative to do this.
Yeah.
And it sounds very reasonable.
All right.
Like a class C warrant, is that put into a database? And how far does that database spread out?
So the database for class C warrants is in the state. It's a state system, and it's only statewide. And not all of class C warrants go into this database. It is, already, class C offenses go into this database. It's mainly driving records that are collected in the state database. So people's records, no matter where they are, what they are, do not include class C misdemeanors. The driving record does include your driving infractions, which is a subset of class C misdemeanors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Let's move forward to E. Consider approval of a public forum, public comment policy for city council meetings. City Attorney Kirkland.
So the last time we talked about the public forum and public comment policy, we had a lot of discussion about the legal environment in which you operate and which this had to be structured. And we tossed around a lot of good ideas, a lot of ways to structure your public comment policies. And Ms. Benson and I have taken all of those comments, distilled them down to the document you see before you. I think most of those you reached consensus on, and I believe that's reflected here. There is one point that we didn't get consensus from you on.
Could you pull it up, or is that, or do we just need to pull it up on our own?
I...
Okay, it's fine.
If you were not happy with, well, if you were happy with Mario's graphics, that's great. I don't have all the people to help me make mine pretty.
That's okay. I've got, I've got it. It's okay, I've got it.
So the one thing that we didn't get a consensus from you all was on the length of time to put people to. And the two options that I had laid out for you last time were continuing with the three minutes and stretching it across all public comment. Or I suggested that you could also do a different level of, a different length for open forum and then public comment sessions for the stuff that's actually being voted on. There's reasons to do it anyway, any, either way, there's reasons to. You can justify all of them. And it really is a question of what's your pleasure and what's your flavor that you like there. The feedback that I've been getting recently is that you all like the three minutes, and you want to put it across the board. I just need to hear you say that's what you want when you adopt this policy.
I see a nod, Jay. I mean, Ms. Anderson?
It depends on the context, but I'm willing to go along with it.
Mr. Bowden?
I am for the three minutes for the open forum. But in the public hearing section, three minutes may not be enough, but it would be up to the mayor to say, you know, you've been repetitive for whatever.
So built into the comment guidelines here is the mayor does have the authority to ask people, give people time to wrap up, or to invite you all to vote on extending the times. And I think I had a discussion with Councilmember Bellinger a little bit earlier. You, as a body, always have the option of asking for a vote to extend time.
But it has to be voted on.
Once you adopt a policy, if you want to do something different than a policy, you have to vote, yes. The reason to have time limits is so that you're communicating to your public, A, we're going to hold you to this, so that everybody that wants to talk has a reasonable amount of time to talk, but we're also going to keep the meeting moving. And it gives you the tool to do that. Otherwise, you rely on Jimmy's charm, which is, you know, substantial and quite capable of many things. But, you know, he probably should be given all the tools that we could give him.
Thank you.
So one of the questions was, there were a couple of questions that I thought were really important. And one was if somebody had a little bit lengthier comment, could somebody else give them their time? And I thought that was an interesting thing. So ahead of time, if somebody said, I'd rather this person speak for me a little longer, could they have their time? And I think that's interesting. And then I'll go ahead and throw out the second one. There may be times when there needs to be a presentation about something a lot more complex. And rather than vote on it, I mean, can any council member put it on the agenda and then say there is a present? And I'm thinking of things like, right now, the Lenana Creek is holding a hearing on the water safety. And if we wanted a presentation from, not necessarily staff, but from people who were from Lenana Creek, who had been involved with this, I don't want them to have just a three-minute. I don't know how that works or where that is.
So this would not foreclose having planned presentations to council from outside bodies. You get that already.
Okay.
And I would expect that you would continue to get that. It doesn't foreclose you and the mayor asking that a thing be placed on an agenda for a presentation. This is for...
And so that wouldn't be limited to the...
No, this is not addressing presentations like that.
Okay.
And then the other, I'm the pool... And then the other, on the pooling of time.
Right.
I think that was an issue that the previous council had, had allowed because there was a limit on the number of people who could speak.
I, I think the previous policy, because I think Mr. Kirkland struck it out, says you can't donate. You cannot donate your, wait. Did, did the, did I make that up? Speakers' time may not be pooled or given to other speakers. It seems like that was, the policy was to not pool.
But you also can't limit the number of speakers, we found through a, through an attorney's opinion. Is that right?
Right. You had previously had a limit on the number of speakers. So sharing of a, sharing time is perhaps more reasonable.
Right.
Uh, in this system where you're not limiting time, anybody can speak, deferring time to someone else doesn't make a whole lot of sense, particularly when you all have the ability to ask that that person speaking time be extended. But again, it is your preference and your policy that we're writing here. We didn't talk about that in the last time, so it's not reflected in this document.
So even though we can't put, because of the AG opinion, we can't put a limit on the number of people, would we be able to put a limit on the number of time pooled? Like say, okay, you can donate time, but it can't exceed X amount of minutes?
Uh, you would be taxing your city secretary's math abilities.
It'd get very unwieldy.
And she's very good, but.
Well, I mean, no, well, no.
I believe you.
I, I mean, in the, in the same way that we were tracking before five people to sign up for, for open forum, you would track it the same way. It's just, so, I mean, because I, I heard about, I've been asked also about pooling time or get, or donating your time. And, and one reason that I found particularly compelling is someone might want to say something about something, but they don't feel comfortable speaking in public. And so they want to donate their three minutes to the person who, or if it's a particularly important issue, three minutes is really not a very long time. And so, but I also understand the other aspect of it, which is, okay, well then, you know, like a hundred people could pool, could donate their time to speaker number one, and then we're going to be here forever. So I don't, I don't support it without limits. But I wonder if there's a way that, I mean, like practically speaking, you could say, okay, well, whoever's going to donate their time has to be physically present and sign up, you know, sign up and there's going to be a limit of.
So council member, if you've got an issue that takes that much time to present, you should be calling a special presentation meeting to hear that issue.
It should be on the agenda.
Well, but then that would, that puts the onus on the person to show up to open forum and within their three minutes request that council put it in a special presentation.
They don't have to show up in open forum to ask you to create a special presentation. They can come to your office and talk to you and convince you that this is worthy of having a special presentation. And then you would take it to your colleagues to say, we need a special presentation. Man, it's.
I understand what you're saying.
So I, there's ways to get all of that taken care of without putting unnecessary, putting all this process. I mean, you all have a role in representing the shy people, as well as the loud people, as well as the people who show up. And part of what you do is you tell us to bring you issues, flesh them out, and we do that. Um, I, a classic example, an easy example is Logan's Port. Councilmember Bellinger has an issue with that and has a lot of things that need to be said. And she's asked it to be put on the council agenda. And we have put it on the council agenda with a presentation for people to present. Lanana Creek Waters, what is it, a Water?
Watershed.
Watershed, Water Quality Studies and Concerns would be another issue that would be significant in terms of understanding and getting the issues before you. Um, and it would be worthy of a presentation.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So just because open forum is not the only way that things get here.
Right. Right.
So notwithstanding all, all your comments that were very insightful, I, I do like the idea of being able to ask somebody to speak for you and donating your time and particularly on things that are on our agenda. And I, I think it's fair to limit it to just one, you know, one donation of time or something. I think that, because there are people who would rather somebody else speak. I'm, I'm amazed at some of the people who are very, very, care very, very much, but are afraid to speak about people I would never have imagined, but.
It's, it's not easy standing up in public and talking.
No, I know. But, 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 and also I think there may be something that somebody is, is much more technical and, and they might like to present that. I don't think it hurts too much. And maybe if, I don't think it'll ever get used, but, you know. But I, I kind of like the idea of, you know, at least donating one go-round. But I, I'm not wed to it. I mean.
So the issues would be limit, taking the three-minute versus the one-minute on, on open forum. And then the other would be, do we want to consider allowing one person to donate their time to another person for a maximum of six minutes? Right?
Yeah, that, I'd be okay with that.
Does, do I have a motion to that?
I still move.
Have a motion. Ms. Bellinger, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Ms. Fisher, any discussion? Okay. Those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I got the card ahead of the horse. Absolutely.
That's right.
We need public comment before we did our discussion. I apologize for that.
Okay. Let me be clear on this. I know that the citizens, whatever we do in the beginning, three minutes, right? We've agreed on that. Where I'm not clear is, are we talking limiting agenda items to three minutes?
Yes.
Public comment deals with agenda items.
Yes.
And so that would be the public's comment in, in, in relation to an agenda item.
Public comment. Okay. So now, since there will be a meeting and I will have a lot more than three minutes that I'll need, so therefore.
Are you talking about Logan's Port Street?
Oh, no. I would never be talking about Logan's Port Street.
If you're talking about Logan's Port Meet Street, there's special rules.
So all I have to do is ask my, my council member, this is my council member, my wonderful council member, and they will have the right to grant me enough time to make my presentation. Is that what I just heard?
And, and I, and actually, I meant to modify my motion beginning December first.
And, but, but I need an answer to, to what I just asked from maybe the city attorney?
So, I'll let you answer.
The question was, if you want to speak for longer than three minutes on an agenda item, I'm going to have to say, hey, everybody, can we let her speak more than three minutes?
And then they'll vote on this?
And then we vote on it?
I don't think that's very democratic.
Or six minutes or.
I'm a little concerned about that.
What do you think we should do?
I'm not sure, but I think in certain issues, and there are various issues. In my particular issue, I've done a tremendous amount of work, but there's no way you can get the whole thing out in three minutes. So I think there has to be some fluctuation here, and I don't know how you address that. Because there, most items, yeah, you can get rid of in three minutes. Comprehensive plan was one where, you know, people probably took two hours. But there's certain issues require more time from people. People who have done a lot of research, people who have done a lot of work. And it's not just my particular issue, but there are other people with similar issues. I mean, I'm already in trouble having been clocked on three minutes before. So there's no way certain things could be done in three minutes. Also, like I've seen various people come here and make presentations and things like that. And just like you said, sometimes just the technical things are going to take more than three minutes. So how do we resolve this?
What would, I, I understand the point and there has to be a balance between, I mean, is your suggestion for, for there to be no limit?
Well, I understand that there are those that just never shut up and just to hear themselves talk. And I don't know how that balance is made. But I also think that there are those that have valid presentations or whatever you want to call them. And I don't think that they should be limited to three minutes. So maybe it, before, they can be told that you, you go to the city secretary or something and ask, this is going to take X amount of time. May I have that time? Not trying to bribe the whole membership to give me three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. And I, I've seen meetings like that where you do that, you know, it's a game. And I, I just think there needs to be a little more fluctuation here. Because I think I'm being, I, I, when I say I, I'm standing for the citizenry. I think I'm being restrained by the council.
Okay. So would there be a way, a mechanism by which we could say three minutes is the standard rule, but if? I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to think about like a procedural fair.
Councilmember Fisher, that is the presentation meeting.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
But I don't think that she's giving the presentation.
But there, there are, there could be more than one presentation.
Like it would be a presentation and then her, she has a public comment that isn't a part of the presentation.
Well, my public comment is a presentation.
So those issues that are that technical or in-depth that require that much discussion should have additional meetings devoted just to that. Where there'd be a workshop, where you all workshop it and take comment as long as you want, any way you want. Or a special presentation where people are lined up to speak on the issue, to present the issue, the technical aspects of it. Those are things that you plan for in advance. If it comes up that there's an issue that requires that, you all have it within your authority to say, pull this one from the agenda, even as we're having the meeting, saying, we want a, we want a special meeting on this.
No, I, I don't think that's what I'm asking.
But it is what you're, no, I'm sorry.
No, no. What, what I'm, what I'm asking is that, and in specific, on November sixteenth, you're supposed to deal with Logan's Port Street. There are at least four people that have made presentations, that are valid presentations. They're not just people talking off the top of their head. And that's going to take more than three minutes. And so how do we do that?
Those people are not limited by the three minutes. That's the presentation meeting.
That's my concern, but, but forgive me for my ignorance because I'm a little confused on this one. So you can do that at the council meeting.
Council has asked for that, for that issue. And when council asks for an issue to be explained and have a full presentation, that's what you get.
At the council meeting.
That was my understanding.
Let, let me, let me clarify a couple of things. First of all, there is a presentation that is going to be, you know, presented. And there, what, what Ms. Costello is saying is there are one or maybe more additional presentations from individual people. I don't know how many there are, and I don't think it's fair to impose our rules, whatever we're saying now, because people have been working toward this for a long time. So whatever we adopt, I'd like to adopt it beginning December first because I don't know what exactly people have. There will be a one large presentation and, and people have not been told they've been, they need to limit or whatever.
Right, right now, the rule is three minutes.
Not, not on an agenda item.
Not in the agenda items.
On, on public comment, it's, it's not?
No.
Do you not currently have a time limit on the agenda?
There's no time limit on agenda item. In fact, you can go to thirty minutes. It shows in, you know.
People, I think, will be, you know, very thoughtful. They're not going to just, you know, talk for forever.
Yeah, I was kind of under the impression that as you brought this to the council, that you would define the presenters.
I'm not, I, I, my pact was to get this on the agenda. That's what, and, and have a presentation that, that people would ask to have done. And then other people are, will want to speak. I am not running it. I am just the avenue for this to be, to be, to be presented to council.
I mean, okay, so the way that I'm, because we are very clearly talking about one issue, which is the Logan's Port Street meeting.
Well, no, I'm, I'm talking about one issue, but there are other issues that will rise to this level of importance by other people. And so to say that the public forum only has three minutes puts you in handcuffs if you're going to make a valid, a valid presentation.
But that's where we need to have a separate either agenda item or meeting for those issues.
Meeting wouldn't serve the same purpose.
We can pull that in.
It should be done at council.
Ms. Costello, would you, would you let Mr. Anderson answer the question, please?
You would still have a public meeting. It would just be a separate meeting.
And that's.
On, on that issue.
I, I've heard that.
If it rises to that level, then we, we separate it out and do it.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't want a separate meeting. I want this done at council, at council level. I mean, I've been with other councils and other cities and everything.
It would still be a council meeting.
How is that possible?
We would just put it on a different meeting.
Am I correct, Mr. Kirkland?
Let's, let's let Ms. Costello give us her comments, then we can deliberate. Is there anything else that you'd, you'd like to tell us?
What I want to know is, how do we go and rise above the three minutes in response to an item on the agenda? Because there should be a vehicle that if you can validate that you have something you wish to present that's going to take more than three minutes, you should have that right. And I would like to know what that vehicle is. And not another meeting or not another place or at the meeting that is taking place for that time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We will deliberate further.
No, no. I, I'm just concerned before you vote. Because if you vote for three minutes, then how do I rise above that?
I, I understand your, but, but this is not the appropriate way for us to discuss the issue. You give us your comment and then we deliberate and, and, and make an effort to go forward. And it could involve pulling the motion altogether, having Mr. Kirkland do some more work on it and try to figure a better way. But, but I mean, the, the way the, this exchange i- is not appropriate in, in the council meeting. You, you make your comment and then we deliberate and, and make a decision.
Okay, but I'm just responding to what I just was told.
Thank you.
And we, and we don't have a time limit yet on how long I'm allowed to do this, and that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you.
Well, um.
Mayor.
Wait, we have one, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
It was hard for me to get here, so I want to say what I want to say.
Sure.
Oh, Vicky Linnell. I live on Cox Street. Thank you all for listening. I think it's really important, you all just spent this item before this, talking about community engagement. Turning open forum into one minute is, is the worst thing you can do for public engagement. It's insulting. If Mike, if, if I have to race up here from left again because I care so much about an issue that I want to talk to you and you give me a mere moment of your time, that's pretty insulting. And, and I'm not saying this to anyone personally because I'm shocked. I mean, I'm, I'm shocked that that would come from this council anyway because that's not who you all are. But also I want to say I've been in hearings where you are allowed to donate your time. And I think that the benefit of that is it can streamline things because people aren't repeating the same thing over and over. You don't have the movement back and forth. And you can get a much, a more broad and deep view of the issue at hand. So I, I don't think it's always a game. I mean, everything, everything can be abused. But it can also be a really good tool to streamline and get a better discussion. And so I would like to ask you to consider that and also to consider keeping the, keeping it open, an open time on, on agenda items. Because we're here because it's important to us. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Brandy Cartwright. I'm just going to second what she said. I think that one minute is not enough time for an open forum. That is something that's not on the agenda. And a lot of times, it can be a big issue. I've brought open forum issues on the parks to the council and it was hard work to get it into three minutes, but we did. And so I really do think that one minute is just not enough time. most of the time, three minutes is enough. But there are definitely times where it's not. So I'm not sure what your, gonna, conclusion you're going to come to, but just know that there are those occasions where three minutes is, is just not enough to get that information out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So based on that, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Right.
And ask Mr. Kirkland to work on this a little longer and come back to us.
Can I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Before we move forward, I wanted to clarify something. It was, nobody on council wanted to limit public comment to one minute. That wasn't, that wasn't the plan, it wasn't the idea, nobody ever mentioned wanting to do it. It wasn't one of the options that was presented to us as something that other cities do. It is not something that I think anybody on this council was going, or even had a thought to do. That's all.
And, and, and I do think, I'll add to that, nobody that I heard of wanted to do the, a one minute thing. I can't even sign my name in one minute. So, but, but I think we, I think we are struggling with how to have a more open forum. So I do think this needs more work, and I would really like to-
Does it require us to table E, or what does it require?
Yeah, what do you, what do you want me to do? I'm definitely withdrawing.
You have a motion in a second.
A withdrawal.
I withdraw my motion.
Not after the second. The second can agree to it, but once it's been seconded.
Are you sure I can't pull it?
Can I, if I agree to, if I agree to the withdrawal, then it's withdrawn?
If you withdraw your second, yeah, goes away.
I'll withdraw it.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to table it or anything, you just tell me to go work on it some more.
Yeah, I think we'd like to work on it some more, maybe look to see what other cities are doing.
With respect to pooling time?
To, with respect to, yeah, extending time, pooling time?
I, I thought, I thought that we were okay on the pooling time. I thought that we had consensus on the pooling time. I think that the issue is on how, how you balance the time limit on someone who wants to speak on an agenda item, I think was the only issue.
And, and I think the, Ms. Costello also talked about if, if somebody knows they want to speak for 10, 12 minutes, or could we have some kind of permission process, you know, for the agenda item? And so that, you know, particularly if there's technical, and I think that makes a lot of good sense, you know, for any of these items we were thinking about there. So I think if you think about some kind of request, you know, process too.
Well, the-
Those are, I think those are everybody's-
The way it's worked in some other cities is that nobody gets to speak unless they've called the city secretary the day before and signed up to speak and told them what item and how much time they need, and then where you, they get one, two, or three minutes to speak. If they need more time than that, then they have their, they lobby their council members to, to do a different approach to figuring out that issue.
Well, on an agenda item, I mean, they may not know they want to speak until they hear-
The agendas are posted in 72 hours in advance, so they have a, a weekend to find you.
Sure, but I mean, people can be sitting out there and hear me say something and go, whoa, that's really not, the, for example, what Ms. Costello is saying, wait, 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 whoa, what about this? I mean, that's a very valuable.
And that's when you say, I want to table this agenda item to some other time for a fuller discussion of this. Or you ask your council members, your colleagues to extend the time to delve into it right then. That's, the point is so you will have some control over your meetings and how much time you're here on any given night. And you have some accountability to your public as to what's going to be discussed at any particular night. If you devote all of your time to one issue on an agenda item, the other items don't get, they get short shrift. And if you know, if you've got somebody that's got that much passion about an issue, or you see that it takes more time, then you need to give it that time, but you need to set the time aside to do that. The, that's, that's the point. And, and you have processes already to do that. You've had workshops on a variety of things, and you'll have a whole month of workshops coming up. You have presentations from outside groups on what they're doing and their specific ask or thank yous for support that don't have time limits. And you have, we've adopted this process or created this process for a particular issue to be brought forth by a council member and other peoples to speak on it. I think you have all of the tools that you need there, you just, and we can put more in here if you want.
Okay. Let's, let's work on that at a, at a future meeting.
Okay. So the consensus I'm hearing is that you want three minutes on the limit, but you want one person donating time to another to make a maximum of six minutes and something else?
I'd, I'd like to hear more from my constituents before I, before I-
So you'll give some input to, to Mr. Kirkland?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, executive session, and this is deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section 551.087. Will we do that here? Persuaded to Texas Government Code Section 551.087, we are returning to, to regular session. And the last item on the agenda is adjourned. I adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.